Thanks, Mr. Panzella. Tonight we'd like to recognize Senior Jared Kessler, who, like Mr. Panzella said, won the 160-pound P.I.A. Triple A State Wrestling Championship last month. Jared is the son of Jeremy and Liz Kessler of Van Devenhead. On hand today is head wrestling coach Bill Swank, school board president Dave Panzella, who will present Jared with a certificate of accomplishment on behalf of the Consoil Area School Board of Directors, and Senator Pat Stefano, who will be presenting Jared with the certificate on behalf of the Pennsylvania State Senate. Jared had an amazing high school wrestling career, amassing over 100 career winnings, was a four-time section championship, won a four-time section championship, a four-time WPIL place winner. The 2022 WPIL champion at 160 pounds, was a four-time state championship qualifier, a three-time place winner, placing fourth in 2019, fourth in 2020, and is being honored today for being the 2022 P.I.A. Champion of 160 Pounds. In the postseason, Jared was named to the Pittsburgh Wrestling Classic WPIL team who faced the Indiana State All-Star Team. Jared won an exciting match and was named to the Outstanding Wrestler Award of the Pittsburgh Wrestling Classic. In addition, Jared is also an outstanding student, a member of National Honor Society, maintains a 3.8 GPA, and has received an athletic scholarship to continue his wrestling and academic career at the University of Pittsburgh. At this time, I'll turn it over to Senator Stefano.
Good evening, and congratulations. So what I have today is a citation from the Pennsylvania State Senate that across the desk and signed by the Senator M. N. himself, in recognition of your tremendous honor. And on top of that, I will invite you and your family to come visit us in either end of May or in June, as all state champions are recognized in the Senate, and we can introduce you to all my colleagues in the Senate 104 to the Senate. Congratulations.
I'd like to congratulate Jared, and I'd like to thank Senator Stefano. Mr. Evans, that was a great presentation, and the Board and Council District is very proud of your great feat, so thank you again. Moving on to public comment, nothing on the agenda, I guess. Next, moving on to athletics, Mr. Renzi.
Request approval of the 2022-2023 winter settlement of contracts, contingent upon receipt of a signed contract no later than one month after issuance, including the posting if the contingency is not met as attached. So those questions or texts, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter B, volunteer coaches, request approval of the following volunteer coaches for varsity football and middle school football. If there's no questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Any ask, Mr. Evans? Okay, that's all we have, Mr. Panzella.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Moving to buildings and grounds, Mr. Layton.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Request approval to dispose of a non-working walk-in freezer located in Dunbar Township Elementary School. The new freezer hasn't been installed. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for PSI to conduct limited indoor air quality testing in six interior locations in the high school over a two-day period at a cost of $2,255. This will be paid from the Buildings and Grounds Professional Services budget account, which has a remaining balance of $30,899.50. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for Fox's Glass to replace 29 windows at Springfield Township, CNP Elementary School, at a cost of $11,460, to be paid by the Capital Project Bond Refunding Account. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for Fox's Glass to replace the exterior emergency doors in the boys' and girls' locker rooms at the middle school, at a cost to be determined and paid from the Capital Project Bond Refunding Account. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for the following event and building use requests subject to adherence to the district's health and safety plan for all the applicable state and federal laws and orders, including any mandatory or recommended cancellations, rescheduling, or postponement, and on the condition that requests are provided event for use specific health and safety plan acceptable to the district. Any rescheduling or postponement shall be the sole discretion of the district, and under such terms and conditions as may be set forth by the district. And I'd like to spread one through seven, and no questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And we also have additional lists, and it's actually will be brought to us on Wednesday. We want to approve or put on a motion for the additional list to pay by the Capital Project Bond Refunding Account, and that's the list that we have, and then when we go out and give bids and quotes to whatever we need down on the list, the list we put forward on Wednesday. No questions or objections, we'll have that in the form of a motion.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And the committee meeting was held April 20, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton.
Mr. Coganair, you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Kirsch? That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Moving to Carnegie Free Library, Mr. Mongell.
We have no motions on the agenda for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mongell. Moving to Consoil Area Career and Technical Center, Mr. Coganair.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. 11A, here's to funding purchase. Request approval to purchase ICEV online curriculum for the following program: welding, carpentry, health occupation, culinary arts, and protective services at a cost of $16,673. This purchase will be paid for from the continuity of education for careers of technical centers grant to 355 years, Governor Emergency Education Relief Funds. No questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
11B, EMS and firefighter recruitment and information event. Request approval to schedule first-ever volunteer firefighter and career EMS recruitment and information event, which will be held at the CTC Committee Gym on Friday, May 6, 2022. The event will begin at 12:15 p.m. and conclude at 1:45 p.m. This event will be open to any ninth, 312th grade, Columbia School District student that is interested in a career in this corresponding occupational field. No questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
11C, travel in accordance with policy number 431. Request approval for the following travel. Gary Matthews told Miss Longer, CTC staff and approximately 35 carpentry students to take a field trip to Carpentry Training Center, Pittsburgh, PA, May 3, 2022. It had no cost to the district, cost paid by group. Shawna Little, Eric Paciano, and seven students to take a tour of Williams Energy Shamrock Compression Station in Uniontown, PA, May 4, at no cost to the district. William Guest, Lisa Donaldson, Rachel Scow, CTC staff, and approximately 14 building and trade students will be taken a field trip to City Bully Lands and Paint Room, May 20, 2022, at no cost to the district, cost paid by the group. No questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
That's all we have, Mr. Panzella. Mr. Layton?
Nothing, thank you.
No, Mr. Panzella, that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coganair. Moving to curriculum, Mr. Harshman.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. 12A, summer school. Request approval of the 2022 summer school proposal as attached. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 12B, no ready. Request approval to renew the license for no ready at a cost of $9,950 for a one-year subscription. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 12C, KUTA math. Request approval to license a two-year agreement for KUTA software at a cost of $1,059 to be paid for from the ARPASR funds. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 12D, citizens' math. Request approval to license a one-year agreement for the citizens' math at a cost of $2,200 to be paid for from the ARPASR funds. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
12B, Amplify, request approval of Dibble's 8E H. Annual Student License, 860 license from Amplify at a cost of $12,814. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
12F, student-teacher agreement, SRU. Request approval for affiliation agreement between the Consoil Area School District and the Slippery Rock University of Pennsylvania for the 2022-2023 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 12G, travel in accordance with policy number 431. Request approval of the following professional employee travel. Lauren Colson, senior high teacher to attend in virtual project-based learning works Buck Institute for Educational Workshops, August 1 through August 4, 2022, at a cost of $799 registration, staff requested. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 2, Keith Smith, high school teacher to attend in VEX, BS, and EXP training at Robotics Institute of Carnegie Mellon University, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, June 13 through June 17, 2022, at a cost of $1,099 for registration, staff requested. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
12H, curriculum committee meeting was held April 12, 2022 at 1:00 p.m. That's all I have. Mr. Renzi?
I'm done, sir.
Mr. Mongell?
Nothing, thank you.
Dr. Kins?
I have nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Panzella.
Thank you, Mr. Harshman. Moving to cyber, Mr. Martrae.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. We have nothing this evening. Mr. or Mrs. Coganair, do you have anything additional?
Nothing, thank you.
Mongell?
Nothing, thank you.
And Mr. Gups?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Martrae. Moving to federal programs, Mr. Mongell.
Thank you. Item 14A, request the approval for kinder camp for incoming kindergarten students to be held at each elementary building in August at the approximate cost of $12,000 with cost paid from Title I funds. And without any objections, I'd like this placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 14B, request the approval to hold a Consoil Area School District tech camp with the dates and times to be determined, available for teachers to attend a day of professional development hosted by the Consoil Administrative Team and the staff. This camp is focused on introductory and advanced-level training centers tailored to teach the needs of the areas of new technology initiatives and core instructional practices, and it will be paid for through Title II professional development funds. And without any objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 14C, request the approval for Tiffany Griffin, April Morton, Lori Wiltrow, Steve Wiltrow, to attend the Pennsylvania Council of Teachers of Mathematics in Harrisburg, PA, July 20 through July 22, 2022, at an approximate cost of $1,940 for the registration, lodging, mileage, and meal. And all costs will be paid from Title II or A. And without any objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Item 14B is, we had a committee meeting that was held on April 19, 2022. And that's all we have on the agenda. Mr. Mark, oh, our producer isn't here. Mr. Mark Gray, do you have any?
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Kinn?
I have nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mongell. Moving to finance, Mr. Renzi.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Letter A, request approval to appoint a treasurer. If there's no objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter B, request approval to appoint an assistant treasurer. No objections or, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter C, budget transfers, request approval of the budget transfers. No distance or objectives, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter D, request approval to solicit quotes for the tax anticipation note in the amount of $5 million for the 2022-2023 school year. No distance or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
I have one question. Can I ask, Mr. Rautson? Is that something now with our fund balance and the good shape it's in that we need to do that, or is that just to have in case we need it?
To have in case we need it, in the past few previous years, we've gotten courts for a tax anticipation note, and we have not needed it. And if we do not use any of those funds, we do not pay any interest. It sits in an account at the past few years. I don't know if I said what it was before that, but... So we will have a cost for it if we all need it by this point, so we can keep the funding.
Yep, that answered my question, thank you. Other than my question, hearing no others, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter E, request approval to reimburse the general fund, from the Capital Project Bond Refunding Account for the following purchases: 800 Chromebooks from Gov. Connects, Inc., 140 Onova Thinkpads from the Gov. Connects, Inc., one tractor from Brill Hardware, one middle school science tables and chairs from Hempco, middle school doors from Fox's Glass, repair leak at West Crawford, KP Builders, and Springfield CNP windows from Fox Glass. No distance or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
I have one more question. Was there, is that the entire list, or do we have anything else?
That seems to be the list of capital project payments that were paid by the general fund.
Okay, when we did the pay, did that come out of the cap, the other voluntary finance money, though?
Yes.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you. Hearing no other questions, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter F, request approval to transfer $7,000 of the general fund to the capital reserve account for future capital projects. No objections or additions, I'd like that placed on the agenda, please.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter G, request approval to renew CM Breeds and Solutions policy for life insurance effective July 1st, 2022, with no increase. No distance or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter H, request approval to hold budget work session on said date if needed. No additions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda. Question?
We need to discuss that many ones, maybe what dates, maybe for us to have that work session. Is that all right, Mr. Renzi?
Yes, sir.
To discuss Wednesday, maybe one week, one older date, so...
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Question.
What date's going to have to be submitted under the Sunshine Law?
It will have to be added, I think.
Yeah, it says would have to be added.
Okay. But it doesn't have to be added on for Wednesday?
No, it's going to be determined Wednesday, and then subsequently added.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harshman. Any other questions? Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay, letter I, request approval to accept the following donations to Westmore and Fayette Workforce Investment Board to assist in funding for Consoil Area School District's first annual transition fair to be held in May at the high school, $1,000. No additions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda, please.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Letter J, request approval of the attached requisitions from March 19, 2022 through April 22, 2022, and to authorize the district business office to process purchase orders and payments. If there's no objections or additions, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda, please.
Hearing none, those will be placed on the agenda.
Letter K, request approval of the following, of the attached district credit card orders from March 18, 2022 through April 22, 2022, and to authorize district business office to process orders and payments. No additions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda, please.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And we had a committee meeting that was held on April 20 at 10:00 a.m. Anything you want to add, Mr. Layton?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Harshman?
Nothing, thank you.
And Mrs. Rautson? You're welcome. That's all I have, Mr. Panzella.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Moving to food service, Mr. Coganair.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. 16A, summer food sites. Request approval for the 2022 summer food sites. Oldskin Township Elementary School, Springfield Cliffrendon Bridge Elementary School, West Crawford Elementary School. Summer school lunch will be held from June 27 to July 29. No questions or objections, I'd like to place that on the agenda.
Hearing, question?
Have we determined what the cost would be for the adults?
$12.50.
Well, question. Doug, you heard me?
I could have had that.
I think usually, yeah, usually though it's filled in with the motion, right?
All right, I'll respect it, Mr. Rautson.
Thank you, we can have that added for Wednesday. Any other questions on the summer food site? Hearing none, that'll be added to the agenda.
16B, food service committee meeting was held April 20, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. That's all I have. Mr. Martrae?
Nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coganair. Moving to personnel and review and liaison, Mr. Layton.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Request approval of the employment agreement between Consoil Area School District and Lieutenant Colonel Eric Sheets as JROTC Army Instructor for the 205 workdays effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, with a salary to be established by the United States Army and benefits equal to the Consoil Area Education Association membership. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval of the employment agreement between the Consoil Area School District and Chief Joseph Courrier as JROTC Army Instructor for 220 workdays effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, with a salary to be established by the United States Army and benefits equal to the Consoil Area Education Association membership. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval to hire a long-term substitute at Dunbar Township Elementary School effective November 3, 2021, for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval to hire a personal student aide effective March 23, 2022. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval of the following addition to the support professional substitute list for the 2021 school year, 2021-22 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for an aide to take intermittent unpaid days for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval for cafeteria to take, cafeteria workers to take intermittent unpaid days for the remainder of the 21-22 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval to accept the retirement of a teacher effective June 1, 2022. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval to accept the retirement of a teacher effective... Immediately, should I read her name, is it already in effect? Amy or not? Just leave it off till Wednesday?
Yeah.
All right, no questions or objections, we'll place that on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And request approval to accept the retirement of a security effective June 3, 2022. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And request approval to accept the retirement of support professional staff effective June 1, 2022. No question or objection, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
Request approval to hire a purchasing accounting specialist in accordance with confidential employees policy effective, probably has the Wednesday date, and I'm not sure where it is. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And Mr. Renzi, have any to add?
I have nothing, Mr. Layton.
Mr. Harshman?
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Coganair? Dr. Bradley?
Nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Layton. Moving to policy and legislative, Mr. Martrae.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. These are 18A is for policy revision. This will be our first reading for them. Policy 916, volunteers, policy 218, and AR student discipline, and policy 227, controlled substances and paraphernalia. And our committee meeting was held on April 19, 2022 at 10:30. If there's no questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda.
Hearing none, those will be placed on the agenda.
Mr. Mongell, you have anything additional?
Nothing.
Mr. Harshman?
Nothing, thank you.
Dr. Bradley?
Nothing, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Martrae. Moving to safety and security, Mr. Renzi.
Letter A, request approval of the following addition to the security substitute list for the 2021-2022 school year. No questions or objections, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda, please.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda.
And we had a committee meeting held on March 30, 2022 at 10:30 a.m. Anything, Mr. Coganair?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Barney? That's all we have, Mr. Panzella.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Moving to special education, Mr. Layton.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Request approval of agreement between new directions in the Consoil Area School District for educational services for the 2022-2023 school year at a per diem of $125 per day per student, and the previous agreement was $102.
agreement was a hundred and two dollars. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Mr. D'Amico here?
Yes.
You have anything, Mr. D'Amico?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Moving to student services, Mr. Harshman?
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Item twenty-one A, maximum. Request amend the, request to amend the January twenty-third, two thousand twenty educational institute staffing agreement with maximum healthcare services in the Consolesbury School District for one and one, for one-on-one nursing services. This amendment increases the hourly rate for nursing services from forty dollars an hour for LPNs to fifty-five dollars per hour, and from forty-seven dollars per hour for RNs to sixty-five dollars per hour. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-one B, student accident insurance. Request approval of the K through twelve voluntary student accident insurance through United States Fire Insurance Company for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-one C, Avena Healthcare, twenty-one, twenty-two. Request approval for the agreement between Avena Healthcare and the Consolesbury School District for nursing services at an hourly rate of fifty-five dollars per LPM and sixty dollars for an RN. This agreement shall be in effect April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Just one question, I heard back charges a little bit, is that required one April eleventh?
Why is that after the twenty-seven? Make that so.
I was just asking, I wasn't sure.
That's to be changed.
It should be the twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or objections? Be placed on the agenda?
And, uh...
Twenty-one D?
Twenty-one D, sorry. Avena Healthcare, twenty-two, twenty-three. Request approval of the agreement between the Avena Healthcare and the Consolesbury School District for nursing services at an hourly rate of fifty-five dollars for an LPM and sixty dollars for an RN. This agreement shall be effective July first, two thousand twenty through, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-one E, dental exam. Request approval of the Pennsylvania Coalition of Oral Health, PCOH, to conduct free oral health screenings for third grade students at West Crawford Elementary School with consent from parent or caregiver. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Twenty-one F, extended overnight travel. Request approval for Jennifer Purge, Tres Giar, Jase McClain, middle school teachers, and approximately three students to participate in the PJAS state competition, Pennsylvania State University, State College, PA, May fifteenth through May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, at an approximate cost of one thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars for registration, lodging included, transportation and substitutes, and with the district travel, with the district travel budget. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-one G, school calendar. Request approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Twenty-one H, retirement. Request approval to accept the retirement. National Honor, Art Honor Society Sponsor, effective June first, two thousand twenty-two. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Uh, I would like, item twenty-one I, item one through... No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
They need a extra shot for number nine. I was glad it was long. I don't know if you all look at it.
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda? Moving on?
Uh, that's all I have. Mr. Mongeal?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. D'Amico?
Nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harson. Sticking with you with technology, please.
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Item twenty-two A, Chromebook Purchase. Request approval to purchase one thousand two hundred and fifty Chromebooks from Gov Connection at a cost of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid for bond refund money. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Just have one question, Mr. Harshman, from our meeting. If there's a possibility we can take that Chromebook money and move it over to SIR and use that money instead of the bond fund, because we have a lot of things we have to do on our facilities yet, that's a possibility. I'd like to see that happen. That's all I have.
I think that's something that needs to be worked out with the business manager and, uh, Mr. Ghost.
Hearing nothing else, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-two B, Maintenance Agreement. Request approval to extend the copier maintenance agreement with Ford Office Technologies for two years at a cost of eleven thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents per month. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Twenty-two C, Chromebook Purchase. Request approval to purchase three hundred Chromebooks from Gov Connection at a cost of ninety-four thousand two hundred dollars to be paid for from the twenty-two, twenty-three Technology Equipment Budget. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-two D, License Renewal. Request approval to renew the license for Power School SIS at a cost of seven thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents to be paid from the twenty-two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Technology Software Budget. No questions or objection, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-two E, Server Purchase. Request approval to purchase a server from Gov Connection at a cost of seven thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars to be paid from the bond refund money. No questions or objection, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Hearing none, that'll be placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-two F, Chromebook Sell. Request approval to authorize the sale of surplus Chromebooks at a cost of fifty dollars to graduating seniors until June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the district staff until July first, two thousand twenty-two, and to individual members of the general public thereafter on a first count, first serve basis, with individuals being eligible to purchase two Chromebooks per person. No questions or objections, I'd like that placed on the agenda?
Mr. Ghost, I just have one question. I think we talked about that before. Are we going to still hold some back in case you have some spares you need, or some of the roaming teachers may need one?
Yeah, we're actually good with that. Uh, this year, we found replacing the monitors at the middle school, so the classroom will have two cases to replace them. And then we do still have a pretty decent soft product.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll have that placed on the agenda?
Item twenty-two G, Technology Committee Meeting was held April nineteenth at nine thirty a.m. That's all I have. Mr. Margret? Nothing, thank you. Mr. Ghost?
Nothing, perfect, thank you.
That's all we have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harson. Transportation, Mr. Coconair?
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. Twenty-three A, Fuel Escalation Relief. I'm going to pull this item for further review. Any questions or objections?
Hearing none, that will be pulled.
Twenty-three B, we have a committee meeting that was transitioned, committee meeting held on Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty p.m. That's all I have. Mr. Lake?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Renzi?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Nothing, thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Panzella, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coconair. Moving to the President's Report. Number one, request approval to renew the agreement between Capital Area Intermediate Unit One and the Consolesbury School District for Agenda Manager Services beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at a cost of three thousand four hundred dollars. Any questions or objections? If not, I'd like to have that placed on the agenda? Next, Right-to-Know Officer. Request approval to appoint as a Right-to-Know Officer effective immediately. If there's no questions or objections, we'd like to have that placed on the agenda? And next is, just to let everybody know, that we will have a virtual day at Bullskin Township Elementary on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, due to that being Election Day. No questions or objections, we'd just like that on the agenda?
Mr. Panzella?
Yes?
Did I, I'm trying to look, did I, and I'm thought out of, did I read the motion about us interviewing for supervisor, you put on the agenda for Wednesday?
No, you did not.
I'd like to put that on there and add for Wednesday.
Would you like to put that under Personnel? Or Buildings and Grounds?
That would go with Buildings and Grounds. Vicki, which one would that go on? Personnel?
I would say Personnel.
Tim? Personnel?
Personnel.
Would you, we need to read that, Tim, or just have those?
Just let him know that it'll be on the agenda.
Oh, I see. I just got to let him know that we've gone Wednesday, but I thought we had that on today.
And so what will use what formal language for the mission will be agenda, if it will be put in public at least twenty-four hours.
All right, thanks. I just want to make sure we've covered it. I'm sorry, right?
No, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lake, for catching us. Public comment for non-agenda items? Nothing. Uh, moving to Assistant to the Superintendent?
I don't know.
Uh, moving to Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Panzella. I wanted to thank Debbie Reba and the Am Vets Ladies Auxiliary Post, number one oh three. They donated fifteen cases of gallon hand sanitizer. Not only did they contribute that, and they donated, they actually delivered it, and it was kind of fun. We got to meet them out in the parking lot, and it was a group of the Am Vets Ladies Auxiliary that were really interested in our school, asked a lot of questions about our school, very positive, and they were traveling around to a lot of local school districts and making these donations of hand sanitizers. Uh, not only, like I said, donating, but they were getting them out of their van, and they were loading them up onto our dolly and our pallets and everything like that, so we really appreciate that support from the Am Vets. Also, I'd like to thank Westmoreland Fayette Workforce Investment Board. Earlier in the agenda, there's a motion that will hopefully be approved on Wednesday to accept their donation of a thousand dollars for our transition fair, and we're looking for some great things for some of our students, our needy students, to know what kind of workforce is out there for them and how they can be successful and productive citizens. And lastly, as many of us know, we're in the heat and in the midst of our PSSA testing, and which can add a lot of anxiety to not only our students but to our staff, and I wanted to thank them. We had awesome attendance. I found Cairns today was one of our highest-attended days for both students and staff, and with, you know, that kind of attendance, we can only hope for great things to come out of that testing, and we appreciate that, and wish all of our students best of luck as they go through these testing cycles. And I know that our students are supportive of our teachers, and our teachers are supportive of our students, and it's a two-way street, and we're hoping for great things. Thank you, Mr. Panzella.
All right, and one more quick thing before we adjourn. I see Mr. Swink's still out there. I just want to congratulate Jared one more time. Congratulate you, Mr. Swink, our head wrestling coach for the senior high, and your staff. You guys have done a great job with the kids, and I just want to thank you for your time and effort with you and your staff. Thanks again. A motion to adjourn?
So moved. Okay, I was getting nervous, I thought everybody went to staff.